...words or different fonts to try to get you to look at the picture. The way that cigarettes are advertised and the way that they're placed in boxes make them look like a product that is not as dangerous as they really are. These cigarettes are marketed with a different strategy. They are shown as a healthy alternative to cigarettes.
Uh, yes, I know a lot of people who use these cigarettes, especially kids my own age, because it's easy for them to get.
Cigarettes are something easy to buy, and they're only a dollar, and they're really cheap, and they're easy to get. So, actually, it's cheaper, they're under a dollar, and they're actually two for 99 cents, and the color is very vibrant, and the flavor is like white grape, so it's definitely something that young teens would definitely catch their attention.
They don't need any more than 15 weeks. They have a multi-billion dollar industry, there's numerous apps keep targeting younger kids right now.
Young people are buying tobacco products way too easily without being of age. The tobacco companies are trying to get as much money as possible, and store owners are making it very easy for little kids to see these products, and I think that they should stop advertising with the intent of targeting little kids.
The town of Lee Willman is such a great town, and the fact that it's being polluted by all these cigarettes as demeaning things is not what I'm talking about.
Alright, so, we'll get back to kind of the content with that video later, but just wanted to set it off on a really, a really great note. We're really proud of the kids in that video and all the work that they did. But we're gonna start off by just talking a little bit about tobacco. We often get questions, a lot of times, you know, is tobacco still really a problem, especially among kids? The Surgeon General just recently released a report that indicates that youth e-cigarette use is an epidemic. It's increased 70% over the last year alone, and 26% of Pennsylvania high school students are using tobacco products. And as you can see here on the slides as well, there is a very big healthcare cost burden, as well as premature death for a lot of Pennsylvanians in general. So, these documents displayed on the screen are images that were taken from R.J. Reynolds, internal documents that were released as part of the master settlement agreement. There's a lot of text on there, but a lot of the content is really getting towards how to target younger kids. And that's in the retail environment, or advertising in the retail environment. We know that tobacco companies were targeting kids when, when these snapshots were taken in the 90s, and we know that they're still doing it now. So, you know, what are ways that we can, can address this and keep our kids safe? So, because of the master settlement agreement, tobacco companies are really regulated as far as where they can advertise, but the retail environment is not one of them. The retail environment is really big tobacco's last frontier. The advertising is largely unregulated, and they spend most of their money on advertising in the retail space. So as you can see here, they spend billions of dollars and almost all of their advertising budget in the retail space alone. We know from research that tobacco marketing increases youth, use, and incurred, I'm sorry, impedes current users quit attempts. It's unregulated, and it accounts for the vast majority of expenditures. We also know that kids who live in neighborhoods with a large percentage of tobacco retailers have a higher probability of smoking, and they smoke more. So, every year CDC releases information about what states can do as a way to curb youth tobacco use. And initiatives at the point of sale or in the retail environment is one of those initiatives. So, there's a lot of different types of point-of-sale restrictions or ways to protect kids in the retail space from these, from these advertisements. Some, because of, of the way Pennsylvania is kind of set up, really strategies that would be effective for Pennsylvania would be a zoning policy. And that is because of preemption. So, Pennsylvania is preempted from a law that municipalities can do, being, policies can't be stronger than the state level, but municipalities typically have very broad authority over zoning policy. And this is something where, where municipalities can really excel and, and protect, protect their youth. You know, Scranton has really been a leader in the past with, with public health policy and protecting youth, and this is a potentially a step, another step in the right direction, making Scranton a leader. Also, I wanted to mention, oh, you can go to the next one, Tony. This, these efforts are something that has support broadly from the Pennsylvania Department of Health, and there's initiatives like this one that I'm gonna talk about shortly going on all across the state as well. Go to the next one. So, for this, for this project, some strategies that were identified that would be plausible would be to limit the location of tobacco retail outlets within a thousand feet of schools to protect kids, and then require posting of the PA free quit line information in retail spaces. So, Pennsylvanians all have access to a free quit line they can call to get cessation counseling via the phone or online, and they get free NRT as well. So just having that information available for them to call if they'd like to quit. So, point-of-sale in other places. Like I mentioned before, this is something that is happening all over Pennsylvania. It is pretty recent, so stay tuned. There's a lot of other places across the country that have implemented point-of-sale measures, including Calif, lots of places in California, Colorado, New York, Wisconsin, and even in Philadelphia, they have retailer restrictions as well, but theirs is a density cap, which is a little bit different. And San Francisco. So, back to the video, which, which were of our amazing kids. So, we, through the Tobacco Resistance Unit, which is part of the American Lung Association, recruit true, recruit youth from all across the state that are involved in essentially promoting being tobacco-free, being the next tobacco-free generation. They work on projects all across the state. And we recruited a group out of Dunmore to actually look at the retail environment in Scranton. So, we trained them to do retailer assessments, looking at price points, promotion, and advertising, and they actually assessed all of the tobacco retailers within the city of Scranton. We pulled data from the Department of Revenue and kind of refined it, so they were able to assess 81 stores. And briefly, these are some of the, some of the biggest findings here. So, we found that cigarrillos or little cigars were placed close to merchandise for youth and at a child's eye level more than any other tobacco product. And the table demonstrates their tobacco advertisements at a child's eye level, so within three feet of the floor, looking at advertisements there. 50% of cigarettes within all the retailers in Scranton were within three feet of the floor. Go to the next one. So, this is frequency of products within 12 inches of toys, candy gum, slushy machines, and ice cream. As you can see here, the, the largest amount there is cigars or cigarrillos. And 19% of retailers sold e-products. 86% of the retailers sold flavored cigars or cigarrillos, and 71% advertised them for less than a dollar. So, these typically are in, they're flavored, they're in very bright packaging, and they're all, always at a very low price point. And we also found that 14% of retailers displayed graphic health warning, and only 12% displayed quit line signage.
And that, excuse me, that 12% was in Scranton?
Yes, this is all, this is all Scranton-specific data.
Okay, and, and right now, as it currently stands, the quit line signage is not required by law?
No.
Okay, so the city would be the entity that would be able to change or alter our zoning laws, if I'm understanding you correctly, to mandate that? Okay.
Well, that, that particular issue, though, would that be more of a state issue, or would the city be able to do that? Because that's not really a zoning issue, per se, that's, that's just requiring a display of a particular sign.
Yes. So, this point-of-sale initiative has been identified as a, a local or municipal issue, as a, as a policy priority of the American Lung Association for Pennsylvania.
Well, I, I agree with that. I think there's some things we could do on the zoning side of it, but I'm not sure that particular part of it, where we're putting that sign, what's it called? The quit, quit line sign, which I think is a great idea, by the way, but I'm, I'm not sure if that could be done locally or if that has to be done at the state level. I don't know why the state hasn't done something with that, to be honest with you, since, especially since their health department.
Sure, yeah, happy to discuss specifics of that with you. At a later point, I don't have all the details on that one, unfortunately.
Alright, okay.
And through our work here, we also were able to, you know, have some partners sign on to support these initiatives that include, of course, our organization, the PA Department of Health, Lackawanna-Sesquahanna Drug and Alcohol, Boy Scouts of Northeastern Pennsylvania, Scranton School District, and Lackawanna County Medical Society as well. So, of course, the, the immediate thought that comes to mind when you're talking about retailers is cost and benefits for retailers specifically, and, and for the community at large. Go ahead, Tony. So, there have actually been a lot of studies done on the impact of retailers with, with tobacco control policies. Overall, looking at, at sales of tobacco retailers, they found that tobacco is not the biggest driver of profits for, for convenience stores, specifically which of the tobacco retailers in Scranton, convenience stores make, make the largest proportion. There was a study done that showed that while 31.4% of in-store sales were from tobacco, only 18% of profits were from tobacco. They also found that, you know, regardless of whether tobacco was purchased, it didn't change the amount people spent on other products. And also, a different study had shown that the retail industry would expect it to be relatively unchanged despite cigarette consumption as a whole. And of course, you know, as always, if you are implementing something like this, you're gonna have reduced exposure to tobacco, pro-tobacco messaging, decreased initiation of tobacco use, which we've seen other places, and then, of course, creating a future generation of healthy tobacco-free voters for, for yourselves. And that's it that we have for the slides, but I wanted to have Tony, since we have just a little bit of time, have Tony talk just a little bit about the, the youth perspective. We were gonna have some youth come today, but unfortunately, they had some other conflicts, and it didn't work, but Tony was able to work really closely with the youth who did these assessments, so have him talk briefly for a second.
Okay. Well, you might know the reason why the Dunmore students can't be here is because their team is ready for a state championship.
Oh, they're in the, go for the state title, right.
So, so many of the students, of course, are all getting on a bus to go down there. But, one thing you have to remember is, here we had this group of dedicated teens. In case you're wondering, like, why not Scranton? Well, Scranton, they were worried about liability of getting the kids out. Dunmore, which has been very helpful to us in many things over the years, they agreed, they're right there. I mean, you go ahead and go one block down, and you're in Scranton from where they're located. But they went out and went ahead and spent 15 to 20 minutes in the store doing a very detailed survey. The thing is, is that the people in the tobacco stores in almost, you know, 100% of the cases were not, they didn't feel that, you know, uncomfortable about the kids being there. As a matter of fact, part of this video was actually shot in a tobacco shop with an owner who pretty much agrees with what we're trying to do. So, this is a youth-driven initiative, pretty much like it was back when we were working on the Clean Indoor Air Act here in Scranton. It was a youth-driven initiative, and that is what drove it to actually getting passed, unfortunately, we mentioned, preemption, the state preemption taking over. With this here, we don't have to worry about preemption, in a sense, because of, it doesn't come underneath the Clean Indoor Air Law. But I think it's important to remember that while we're here, you have to remember that it is driven by youth and not youth who've been forced into doing it, or, you know, they were scripted. No, in that video, they were not scripted. What they said is what they feel and believe. So, that's the important part of what we're trying to do here. And it will make a difference in getting something done, because right now, I am dealing with going to countless school districts, talking especially about the e-cigarette epidemic that's out there. And it is a real problem. And part of the problem is, some of these things are too easy to get. They're manufactured to make it look like candy, they're candy-flavored, so if you're wondering about the cigarrillos, why they're putting it next to candy? It's because, well, you go ahead and you create a norm, so when a child is looking at something, they look at the candy and they see what next to it, what's next to it, and they may feel, well, it may, that's not, might not be that bad for me if it's that close to candy. So I think this is an important initiative, and I'm gonna tell you, if Scranton could be the first, like, they were, and everything else we've done with Young Lungs at Play, and with the Clean Indoor Air Act, it might not have went all the way, but we were the push to get the state to pass a stronger Clean Indoor Air Act. So Scranton stands to be, once again, as a leader in this whole process.
Yeah, I would, um, you know, we've met several times now. I, I would really like to lead the charge on this. I think it's really important. I do, I agree with you that there is a huge epidemic with e-cigarettes and with vaping. Now, can you just quickly explain, is that the same thing, or is that different? Vaping and...
It is, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing, right?
It's just vaping is what they push because they're trying to push the fact that it's not smoking, it's water vapor. And it isn't water vapor. It's a chemical cloud of aerosol, a chemical aerosol that has particulates that are getting into people's lungs. And every day, I keep on reading more and more studies about the harms that are being done. But vaping is the same thing as electronic cigarettes, or we say "NS" products, because that stands for Electronic Nicotine Delivery System.
Now, I, I think I remember from your information that you gave, there's 35 establishments in Scranton that are a thousand feet away from a school, am I right? Somewhere in the 30s?
I think it's in the 20s.
Within a thousand feet of a, of a school?
Yes.
How much was it?
I think it was 23?
I'm trying to remember now.
I wish I...
It was someplace in that range.
It was in, I believe it was in the 20s.
Now, I know you, you're not lawyers, but would that be, if, if city council did something to, to, to ban that, would, would they be grandfathered in the current establishments?
That...
I'm assuming, I don't know.
That would be your judgment.
Yes, I would think so. I would think so. Now, luckily, we have a, we're in the process of redoing our zoning ordinance, and that should take place sometime this year. So that's an opportunity to put some language in that zoning code relative to where they can be located. But the ones that are there, obviously, are not gonna move. The best we can do there is try to get the quit line sign in the windows and minimize the advertising. Can I ask you about the advertising for a minute? Are the cigarette, the tobacco companies, obviously, if you have their product in the store, are you required to have the signs because you have the product in the store? Is that why they're so prolific all over the place? It's part and parcel to, you know, selling the product?
Yes, so tobacco companies dictate signage and advertisement and for selling their product, where it has to be placed, how large, things of that nature is, is all dictated by the companies and not the store owners.
Okay.
And sometimes incentives are given for placement.
Right, which is true with almost any advertising and marketing scheme, I guess you would, would call it. So there are some opportunities, I think, for, I'd like to see the quit line sign, if you could find out for us if that's something that we could do, because I think it said 12%, I think is what it is. I mean, there's no reason why that's not 100%.
Right.
And if we can pass legislation to make sure that's up there, I think that's very easy to do, if we can. Now, if that's a state issue, then certainly we would be supportive of contacting our state representatives and state senator to try to get something passed at the state level. But if we can do it locally, then let us know if we can do it locally, and we'll try to do something.
And I think you said that we can, we can do that, right? We have, because of the...
I mean, from what we understand, with the Clean Indoor Air Law, that only deals with smoking in public places, did not really deal with advertising or product placement.
We, we are happy to look into it and get back to you with specifics.
Alright, but also, you know, keep in tune to what's happening with their zoning code, because when they start the process, there'll be public meetings relative to that, and it might be in your best interest to, to come to a public meeting just to talk about this issue.
Sure, absolutely.
And we'll, and we'll try to keep you in the loop as well.
Yeah, sure.
Great.
Councilman Donahue, do you have anything? Alright, well, I plan on, I think council plans on meeting with our solicitor next week. He's not here tonight, and I'd like him to investigate this issue as well, so if you could please keep in contact with us with whatever you come up with, and we'll move from there. But we really appreciate you coming tonight and, you know, staying on top of this issue and for all that you do as part of the American Lung Association.
Oh, one thing, I just want to add for the Young Lungs at Play, we do have stickers now that can go on the signs that say "No Vaping."
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, I'd have to know, like, you know, how many stickers you'd need, and all they would do is, there's a certain place on the sign that they, where they would go, because that's part of what the law was, that was enacted.
If you want to stop in the clerk's office before you leave, Mrs. Reed has the email for Mr. Gallagher, who's the DPW director.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
He'll have that information on hand, and yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright, thank you so much, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the Council, number 58, 2019, authorizing the installation of two two-hour parking-only restrictions directly in front of 934 Beach Street, Zaleski's Clubhouse Cafe.
Nobody signed in to speak on this item. Is there anyone that would like to address council specifically regarding the no parking on Beach Street? But the records show there was nobody. Hearing's adjourned.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the Constitution, to the Constitution of America, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for all of those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Paley?
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A minutes of the regular meeting of Scranton Redevelopment Authority held February 6, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B minutes of the Lackawanna County Land Bank meeting, held February 8, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C minutes of the Civil Service Commission meeting, held February 7, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D minutes of the regular meeting of the members of Scranton Housing Authority, held February 4, 2019.
Any comments? Received and filed.
3E Tax Assessors Report, for hearing date to be held March 27, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3F Arcadis Final Report, presented March 11, 2019, for the City of Scranton Stormwater Implementation Study, Stormwater Fee Rate Structure, and Stormwater Fee Study.
Are there any comments?
Yes, I have one comment. Ms. Hodawanitz had asked several questions. She put them in writing, so we forward those questions to Mr. Bolzoni, the Business Administrator, after last week's caucus, that would be March, Wednesday, March 13th. Mrs. Reed had met with Mr. Bolzoni, so I just want to read kind of what his response was. He emphasized that the Arcadis presentation was a preliminary analysis. Additional information relative to Ms. Hodawanitz's questions will be forthcoming. This is a formative process, and at this point, there is no commitment to anything in place. Unfortunately, the questions cannot be fully addressed at this time. Information from the analysis has just been released. The digitizing was a lengthy process, and to note once again, reducing pollutants has been mandated by DEP and the EPA. So, I don't know where Ms. Hodawanitz is in the crowd, but that was the response that we received. Thank you.
Any other comments? Received and filed.
3G Controllers Report, for month ending February 28, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time? Before we begin, I see we have a large number of students from Scranton Prep here. Once again, we'd like to welcome you to our meeting. Hopefully, it'll be a, a quick and relatively painless experience for you. Thanks.
Sorry, I have two, two announcements. Two, actually, birthday announcements, I usually don't do this, but William Buddy Cosgrove, I'd like to wish him a happy birthday, 90 years old, north Scranton's finest, and also like to wish a belated happy birthday to Kara Van Fleet. She's a regular city council watcher, so I'd like to wish her all the best. Thank you.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. Well, thank you for the information back on the status of the stormwater management. It's, it's an issue, though, we should not forget, even though the information was preliminary. Periodically, we should keep asking questions, where do we stand? And I hope that as information becomes available, there will be periodic, maybe caucuses or public meetings to keep the public informed. You don't want our first heard to be the receipt of stormwater fee bills. That, we don't want to happen. Okay, I was happy to see that the runtul registration lawsuit has been resolved, and I think it was a happy medium between the plaintiffs and, and the, and the city. Is it, am I right to assume that the money in the escrow account, which is not used to refund people who paid their registration fees, will go into the general fund, or what will happen with that escrow account? Does anybody know?
Well, that's yet to be determined. There may be an opportu, some of the money we're looking at putting into that beautiful blocks program that was announced as a way to put the money back into the community.
Okay, as long as we just don't let it sit there, you know?
Oh, no, no.
Use it for something.
It won't be sitting there.
Okay, kudos to Jim Lockwood for the exceptional article he had this morning's paper on the repairs to City Hall. I think it was a good summary of a very lengthy document, and it highlighted some major questions. With that in mind, that's item 5B, I guess, on today's agenda. Highland Associates' cost estimate of $10,753,166. Now, that was based on a report that was issued in August of 2018. And I was looking at the backup, and my impression was that that estimate did not include potential additional costs for things like asbestos, lead, and mold remediation, possible hidden water leaks, because they can't really work on the ceilings and the floors until they get in here, other plumbing and wiring issues, didn't account for the cost of relocating personnel as work was ongoing, or reconfiguring office spaces, and bringing the building up to current codes. So, my initial impression was that that $10.7 million figure may be a low estimate. It would remain to be seen that this is gonna be a lengthy process. And I also saw in the backup that the city is going for 50% matching funds, and that the other 50% is gonna come from debt. If we go ahead and do this project, it will be through debt that the city will issue. So that, that'll impact future budgets. I saw a reference to a police ammo storage space in the basement. Did the police still use that space for ammo storage, or is that just the old name for that, that space? Does anybody know?
I think it might be both, but I think most of, I think it's the old name of that space.
Okay, that's just what they call it. Because I was under the impression that every, every function moved out of the building when they built the new headquarters. Also, I, I saw that the City Hall has approximately 52,660 square feet. And questions were raised about, well, if we relocated City Hall and purchased another building, or, you know, maybe even built a building from scratch, where would we go? And I was thinking back, you know, about the time Highland put out this report, the county administration building was sold for $1.6 million. Now, I don't know what the assessed value of City Hall is. It's somewhere on the Knowles Insurance spreadsheet, if you remember that, but I don't think it's much more, I think it's less than $10 million. I don't know if anybody recalls what it is. So, we're looking at... So, we're looking at possibly investing $10 million in renovations. And that may be worth it when you consider all the other options, and this is a historical building. But what I'm not happy about is we should not, once again, pay millions of dollars in renovation and then not have an annual maintenance program, not just for this building, but for all other city properties. You know, periodically, you see, oh, we need an emergency repair to this firehouse or to that building. If we do this, even if we don't do this, all properties in Scranton should have annual maintenance, or we're just inviting ourselves to have big builds down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Bowles?
Evening, counsel. Bob Bowles, Scranton. First off, I think I want to set a record straight with an article that was in the New York Times that I was misquoted. It was also in the Scranton Times. I want to set it very clear that the statement I made that our President Trump was a great equalizer in bringing the term racist to an end, and that Obama was the greatest... I hate to even think about it, individual in setting up races where it is today. He was the creator of it then, and he is now. People misquoted me, and they should know better than to do that, because I will come back out on the attack. What I say is what I mean, that when it came to racism in this country, that our president has brought people together in all walks of life and given them an equal opportunity. How they take it is their business. But I see racism under this administration as something that's going to be a thing of the past. But it was brought to the forefront by Obama, and that was my quote, and I'll stick by it. And the bid, Mr. Gahan, last week with Naug Park, when that was put out for bid, that's when Hinton was still employed by the city. The bid was then put to the side, waiting until after he's out of the city administration, and then he could go ahead and buy it. Needs to be put back to square one, and it needs to be rebid again. Okay, that was a violation, if you want to talk about ethics. You voted to put containers that were in the city, storage containers, whether they're pods or not, they're considered structures under your approval that you guys voted for. You've got to start removing them. If you're going to make a law, you've got to start living by it. And the parking garage that you brought up last week, and, you know, I listened to what you had to say. However, what I want to see is the original contract between the City of Scranton and Basalega. I don't care about any other contract after that. We paid almost $5 million to Basalega at the mall there for 500 parking spaces. I don't care about revenue. I don't care about anything else he made with any other authority that he got involved in. The original authority is what stands. And either the other people accepted that as written, or they pay us the $5 million bucks back. The Electric City Garage was a separate deal for us to help them pay the refurbishment, do all that nonsense. This is about 500 parking spaces, the original ones. So, I would ask that you get the original contract. I don't want to waste my time through a right-to-know and everything else that you have to go through the games here.
I think Mr. Evans is the representative on the board, correct, Mr. Evans? So, I'm sure he can help you.
If you would see that we get the original contract, then let's go to square one. This is about the people and the taxpayers in the City of Scranton. And once and for all, I'd like to see them put first. If we paid this guy that kind of money, and he made his other deals, those deals don't bind us. Or the revenue that we're talking about comes back to us, doesn't go to anybody else to reimburse us for what we put out there. And you should look at retaxing the mall. I brought it up more than once. It's way undervalued. It's way under taxed. So, if we're going to turn this city around, and that goes for the school board, the school district to do what they need to do, you need to re-tax it and reset up where it has to be. I'm against a rain tax being there, and I think we should fight it as a unified group. The stormwater, you don't need another authority. I brought that up last week. It'd be another absolute joke. We could do it within our own city, our own people to do the stormwater. We don't need another dumb authority in this city that we've already had great experiences with. And we still don't even know how to run them and straighten them out from the mess before. As far as Mr. Spano on the Ethics Committee, I'm adamantly opposed to him. I've watched him over the years. He's been on this board, that board. He's a very opinionated individual, and he doesn't have a broad mind that we need for what we need to cover the ethics in this city. And any appointment of him in any way, shape, or form would be more detrimental than it'd be an advantage to the city. As a resident of the city and a taxpayer, I'm adamantly opposed to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Elman?
Well, Wayne, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to forego my usual weekly attack on you and go right to Mr. Pasquale, D. Pasquale, if that's all right.
That's fine with me. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, now the poor Eugene. He started out with a bang about firing teachers, and he ended up with a whimper saying, "Let's hire them." This was... I don't know. I thought he was more of a man than end up like this. Apparently, the greedy teachers' union got a hold of him. I think they're the actual cause of this $200 million. Now, it seems like he wants to call the Naples busing contract. He wants to call their bluff. You know, I've known Mr. De Naples half my life. What if he tells, "Hire the Colts"? He doesn't care about this contract. Where are we going to be? You think someone else is going to come in here and buy a fleet of buses and store them and hire drivers and pay millions of dollars in insurance because you're dealing with children? Very doubtful. You know, we're talking about an alleged million-dollar overcharge. That is 1/200 of the money we're speaking of. 1/200. Before it's all over, Mr. Sunday will probably carry that much home every, you know, over the next few years, the next 10 years or so on his pensions. I don't know what you people are thinking. I don't know what Mr. D. Pasquale is thinking, wanting to call his bluff on something like this. It could just... It'd just backfire on the taxpayers. Someone needs their head examined, if you ask me. And quickly, in last Wednesday's paper, I saw two little letters from some women that were thanking the... Were thanked by Keystone for small donations. Every Thanksgiving, I send them $10 for... They send me a request, and they send me a thank-you note for $10 lousy dollars. These are the people you want to close up. Let me tell you something. When my friend Bob Benke was slaughtered, murdered by Quinn on Wyoming Boulevard a couple of years ago, it was swept under the rug. Anybody think the Quins sent $10 or $15 for his funeral? Not even a sympathy card. Nothing from that people. You know who buried him? Make a guess. You know who buried my friend? Keystone. They had a little service with his adopted family and friends. No matter how you look at it, they have to do more good than harm. There must be some way to resolve these problems. I can just imagine reading... You know, there's some undesirables in the neighborhood. But what are you going to do? You know, it's not their fault. I've got undesirables living right next door to me I can't get rid of. It's just... Have to take the good with the bad. But you people can resolve and save this concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Dobson?
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. I went over the who pays... Who doesn't pay article in the Times. And once again, we have to reduce or replace the money, should be replaced by the state for tax exempts, and the county also has to kick in. And that's all there is to it. It's reached a point where 35% and 40% tax-exempt property is unreasonable, and it's an unreasonable burden on the people of Scranton. The little seminar last week, or caucus, I watched that on Channel 19, and it was very audible. So, I recorded it and went over it. And a thought occurred to me on that. Newton Ransom and Dunmore are... We've heard it time and time again. When our friend Lenny comes in, a lot of development up in Ransom on the side of the mountain there, and the water all rushes down into West Side and inundates those people with the... With floodwaters. And so, at any rate, we should also start talking to them and see what we can do. A lot of times, it's out of sight, out of mind. The water went downhill, and, you know, we don't really want to do and help or do anything to help, and it's your problem. But it's also caused by development on a hill. So, maybe that's something I could lend to that. I don't know what to say about the $8 a month. It's what it is. The federal government has to decide there. Actually, you're seeing as the Susquehanna River flows through five or six states, I would think that they should be doing a lot more to help out instead of handing down federal mandates. And the City Hall article, fix only, don't sell ever. I know we have some expenses there, and hopefully, we can get grants. But it would be silly to sell it for a couple million dollars and then turn around and discover that we have to spend $50 million to replace it, or $75 million to replace it. And it's a great building, and I'd like to see it stay as City Hall. I was digging through my old newspapers and deciding what I wanted to get rid of, and it's been a subject in the past. Study calls for gun safety. And it's mainly an article on guns laying around the house that result in teens taking a wrong move and shooting themselves, and suicides and possible accidents playing around with them. And there's some statistics here, but I'm sure I don't have the time. But I'm going to read off the bottom line. To create that time and distance, state law should require firearms to be locked away and unloaded when not in use. That would preclude anyone from owning a fire... Would not preclude anyone from owning a firearm, but it would deter at least some suicides. Well, I contend that it might deter a lot of other things where somebody gets in a beef in school or something, or they have some problems going around in the upstairs department, and they grab their father's gun. Because, keeping in mind that you have to be 18 at least to own a fire... Buy a purchase a firearm in Pennsylvania, and that may even change. But the thing is that I've been in houses where they're, you know, they're collectors, and they love their guns, and they're kind of laying around all over. And they've got latchkey kids where they're coming home from school an hour and a half, two hours before mom and dad gets home. And all of this stuff is just laying around there. So, somebody gets into an argument, somebody steals somebody's girlfriend or whatever, and we can see what happens. Almost every week, we see what happens. So, if you want to petition the legislator or something, at least petition them that. If somebody wants to have an exotic collection, then how about an exotic gun safe? And you could seat them up at Gander and that new Outdoor Life Place. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Marie Schumacher. I thought there was a lot to talk about on stormwater. I would take a week off and see if we could tie up some loose ends from the past. The exit plan had a requirement to regain our investment-grade credit rating. What is our credit rating now? Have we achieved that goal? If not, what is it?
We can find out for you.
Pardon?
We'll find out for you what we are right now.
We don't know now.
Well, I don't want to guess. I have an idea what it is, but I'll find out for sure.
Okay. Another one. We were to develop a capital improvement financing program. Has that been done?
I don't believe so. I figure, remember, I actually have part of that document here. I asked for a list of, okay, what has been completed, what has not been completed, and I never received that. Like, one thing I'm going to bring up tonight is the debt management policy. I don't believe that's been completed yet, to my knowledge. So, I don't know to be sure.
Okay, and to whom did you request that, a P E L or the city?
P L, yeah.
Or both? Okay. Okay, well, then, moving along. Last week, Norma Jeffries made some wonderful recommendations for a link to the ongoing projects. And she talked about the treehouse at Naug and the street signs. And I'd like to add a few more to that list if we can't get them closed out tonight. What about Sorrento? What has happened there? How much have we invested to date? What is the future for that place?
I had requested that information, too. I don't know... I may have it here someplace, and I can share that document with you. But I was given figures, financial figures. I don't think they're all the way complete with their renovations. But once I find that in my stack of papers here, I'll make a copy before.
Who is... How many occupants are there on a regular basis there?
That I don't know.
Okay. What about Scranton tomorrow? We've given them a lot of money, and we have yet to see how that money has been expended, how much is left, and where that money has been spent. Why can't we get that?
Well, they come in on a quarterly basis, so when...
Pardon?
They are here meeting with us on a quarterly basis, so I'm not sure why...
In the back room. In the back room. I'd like to... I'd like to see it in black and white. Do they not have meetings? Do they not have minutes? Why aren't they in third order?
They're not a city, a city body.
They're nonprofit. They're not required to have minutes.
Why don't we amend the contract? We have a contract with them, do we not? We've given them close to a half a million dollars. I don't know why we are not privileged to do that.
Well, we'll discuss that with them. But I don't, I wouldn't expect to see their minutes here.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Regarding the headline in today's paper, I must admit, the first thought that came into my mind was, gee, I wonder what nonprofit wants this building? Maybe we could get a pool on that. But in the interim, I don't remember what month it was, and today was a very busy day, so I didn't have a chance to pull the file and see. Two things that interest me, because one is, I remember the figure of eight million dollars several months back. So we're already up by twenty-five percent. Few things were mentioned tonight that were excluded, and things of that nature don't usually go down, they go up. And we did spend, Mr. Rogan should remember, back in the days of between two thousand and two and two thousand and ten, we put, as I recall, a goodly investment in this building. I believe this room was painted as part of it. We were not allowed in here, as I recall, for a while because renovations were done here and throughout the interior of the building. And I believe it was even, it was even sandblasted on the outside and repointed. So I will, when I get around to it, pull my file on that capital investment and find out what it was, and.
We'll be asking for Highland Associates will be appearing here in a caucus and doing a PowerPoint presentation on the entire proposal.
I think they were also involved in this renovation, and I was surprised that.
Yeah, I don't know if there was repointing done back then, no.
Oh, okay. I'll see you next week, I guess.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes. First off, I've, Mrs. Reed, I've gotten a few complaints from residents of the thirty-two-hundred block of Oak Street back in Nuka. It's regarding flooding of basements since Oak Street was repaved specifically on the lower side of the street. This is similar to complaints we got from residents in the three-thousand block of Colory Avenue back there. So would you be able to send, pass this along to DPW and the city engineer and have them check it out, please? Also, just to briefly touch on stormwater, it is extremely important to continuously stress the point that the city is mandated by the state and federal government to develop a stormwater management plan. We have to do it, no questions about it. But to be completely honest, even if it wasn't mandated, it is probably something we should consider, be considering anyway. What happens to property values in a city that can't properly manage stormwater or protect its natural resources? Our natural resources have the potential to be one of our greatest assets if we protect them. Climate change is real, and it's time to act. And lastly, just concerning this morning's article on the building assessment of City Hall, just the suggestion of selling this building is absolutely ridiculous to me, especially with not having all the information, such as the question of, could we even sell this building for what it's worth? What about the connection to the fire headquarters? There's been no research done on the deed to see if this building is even sellable. So that's why I'm a hundred percent against selling this building, and I strongly urge the mayor and his administration to prioritize the suggestion within this report, develop a plan to modernize this building, and then execute that plan. This building does not belong to individual mayors or individual councils. This building belongs to each and every citizen of this city, as well as those that came before us, and should continue to belong to those who come after us. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
A few. I'm gonna touch on the City Hall issue as well. First, I'd like to expand on my comments that I made in the newspaper this morning. We are not only the stewards of this government, we are the stewards of this building as well. There's lots of reasons we find ourselves here today, including the stresses of difficult financial conditions. Some of it self-inflicted, some of it not. But for whatever the reasons were, for far too long, those charged with the responsibility of maintaining this building did not. Those responsible for preserving this building to the level we all should expect it to be did not. Maybe they did the best they could, but now we're left dealing with decades, maybe even generations, of deferred maintenance, and here we are today. To be totally upfront, I'm a preservationist at heart. I still serve on the board of the Architectural Heritage Association, and I'm a former president of that group. I'm a former member of the HARP, and over the years, I've restored several properties on my own, and I'm in process of restoring another one now. So I will not accept the premise that we will ever walk away from this significant building. I have watched the model of school districts in other cities that, across the state and the country, where they were mesmerized by the shiny new building while abandoning the old one, with no plan in place for saving and restoring what they leave behind. That cannot happen here, and it cannot happen to this building. We are much better than that. And I will not be part of a mindset that will kick this can down the road again. This building should be a reflection of who we are, as a city and as citizens. It should be strong, it should be resilient, it should be cared for, it should be a place of pride and hope for all of us. In the coming months, there will be a lot of debate on the future of this municipal building. And as everyone knows, I'm always willing to listen to creative ideas. But at the end of the day, I will not bend on my position that we need to find a way to preserve and restore this building. And how we accomplish that is yet to be determined, but we should tread carefully while accepting the full responsibility for its future. A totally separate topic, I recently was sent a photo of a sign that was posted outside of a building. It was not your normal business sign, it was, wasn't even advertising for the business inside. It was just a fairly simple call for action. After a little investigation, I found out the sign was located on the front of a small business on J Street in Sacramento, California. And all it said was, "Every day is your chance to make this city a little better." Every day is your chance to make this city a little better. Pretty simple and pretty powerful. So I don't know what I'm gonna do with that. I have a few ideas rolling around in my head, but for now, at the very least, at the end of every meeting, they will be my last comments before I finish. Every day is your chance to make this city a little better. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, I'd like to first make a motion that city council requests that our solicitor, Amel Menora, prepare legislation nominating Bruce Reddick and Mary Jo Sheridan as councils' representatives on the Ethics Board.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. You know, we received three applications or three resumes and cover, cover letters for the Ethics Board. Council gets two appointments, the mayor gets two appointments, and the city controller gets one appointment. I appreciate everyone that, that applied, and all of the resumes and cover letters were very impressive. And in this climate, political climate, I think it's very difficult to get anyone to, you know, be involved, number one, in politics and public service, and number two, especially on an Ethics Board. So I really appreciate the fact that these three individuals took the time to submit their resume, submit their cover letter, and I think all of my colleagues would agree. So I, after looking through all of them, I do think Mr. Reddick and Mrs. Sheridan are the most qualified, and, you know, I hope they will, I'm confident that they'll do a good job on the board. So I look forward to voting on that next week.
And council did discuss this both last week and, and this week, and I think, at least I know for the four of us here today, we unanimously agreed on, on these two picks, so.
And if we can find out, kind of to piggyback on this, Mrs. Reed, since we're hopefully gonna vote on this next week, if we could, if you could inquire with the mayor's office and the city controller on when they're going to send this legislation to appoint their representatives. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and some move.
We, council sent a letter February twenty-seventh to the controller about a one-hundred, and copied the business administrator about a one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-six-hundred-nine-dollar-eighty-six cent variance in the financial report that we received. We asked, you know, what this was all about. We did not receive a response yet, so I asked Mrs. Reed in the caucus to give us, ask for an update from the city controller and the business administrator. And I would like something in writing. I was explaining in the caucus, and I've said this the past few weeks, we are looking, city council's looking at getting an intern from the University of Scranton into our office. So Mrs. Reed and I met with Matt Coughlin, who is the student body president, and Julie Cohen. That meeting went really well. The university's excited, I think we're excited about it. So right now, they're cleaning up some of the language with the application that students would have to apply for this position, and we're looking at either the summer or the fall to get some, a student in to be, to be an intern. So as I was mentioning, you know, in the caucus earlier, the, the goal here is not to have someone come in and just file paperwork or answer phones. This is going to be an actual experience for the student. We talked with Julie Cohen about a capstone project and Matt Coughlin, and some research that the students would be able to do. So we're pretty excited about that. So I'll continue to update the public as we get more information. We did have a caucus tonight at five fifteen with the American Lung Association. I've met with them before, a few months ago on the topic that I'm about to talk about, and then even before that, we had passed legislation creating the Young Lungs Program, which banned tobacco in parks throughout the city. The American Lung Association tonight gave a presentation that I thought was shocking in many ways, and, but I thought it was great that they were bringing light to this issue. And the issue is the epidemic of e-cigarettes and, and/or vaping in the city of Scranton and in the United States as a whole. We've seen, according to their information, a seventy-eight percent increase in high school students using e-cigarettes and vaping. So it is an epidemic. They also explained how the, the retail part of it, where they sell the cigarettes, is largely unregulated. So what they're looking at in their requesting council's help is in implementing point-of-sale policies by limiting external advertising. So one of the things I'm gonna ask next week that our solicitor investigate is whether we can limit the location of tobacco retail establishments selling e-cigarettes and other tobacco products within a thousand feet of schools to protect children, number one, and number two, to require the posting of Pennsylvania free quit line signage. In their analysis of different retail establishments in the city, only fourteen percent of the stores in Scranton have that signage. And according to the American Lung Association, we have the ability to make that a requirement, and I think that we should do that. I think it will do two things, reduce exposure to pro-tobacco messages, and it will decrease youth tobacco use. So this is just the beginning. I think Scranton, as we have been with some other issues, have been the leader on this throughout the state. So next week, as I said, I will ask Solicitor Menora for his input, and we'll move forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments regarding the article that was in on the front page of the paper this morning. I did have, get quite a bit of input from residents already regarding the sale of City Hall or City Hall moving to another location. Unlike my colleagues who that have made comments, I take a different position. I think we need to look at all options, and at the end of the day, it's gonna come down to what the most cost-effective way to have our government services, whether it's to repair City Hall, which has been mentioned, has been neglected for forty years, and that's really why we're in the situation we're in, that there weren't any major repairs made to this building over the past forty years. So now we're stuck with possibly ten million dollar cost to repair this building. Looking on the other side of that coin, building a new building would cost significantly more than that. New construction, at least as far as I'm concerned, is probably not a wise financial option. There are, however, other buildings that are newer, that have been constructed within the last ten, twenty, thirty years, that may be good options for the city. And I do think we need to look at all those options. I know just recently, the, what's everyone calls the Southern Union Building was up for sale, built maybe fifteen, twenty years ago, larger, much more modern, more energy efficient. That building was for sale for five million dollars. So spend five million dollars to buy a brand relatively new building, or spend ten million dollars bringing this building up to as, you know, getting it as modernized as we can. But at the end of the day, this building's always gonna be a hundred-year-old building. Is it beautiful? Of course it is, and I want to see it restored as well. But if it's gonna cost millions and millions of taxpayers' dollars more to restore this building versus going to a more modern facility, I'd be in favor of moving to a modern facility. That being said, I do support the legislation that is on the agenda tonight, since a decision hasn't been made, and it's certainly not a decision that should be made quickly. You know, I will vote in favor of, of applying for the grant for funds to rehabilitate City Hall if we do stay in this location. But I do think everyone needs to keep a very open mind, because if there is another option that is a million dollars less, multiple million dollars less, and is more modern, I think it's a no-brainer to look at those other options. I do have a lot of questions about the cost of these renovations. Obviously, some of them are things that are pretty easy to quantify, but then there's also soft costs listed that are in excess of a million dollars. We are going to request Highland Associates to give a presentation on this to see if we could get a little more information on what some of those costs are. And also regarding a renovation project of this size, certainly it's not gonna be done overnight. I have questions about how, if the decision is to keep City Hall in its current location, how the current operations will continue while the building is under a full remodel. A ten-million-dollar remodel really should be from, from top to bottom. So that's quite a bit of renovation, and I have questions on how that's gonna impact the current operations that, that we have going on now as well. But again, this discussion is really in its infancy. I know the article in the paper got a lot of people talking. You know, as I mentioned, it's a beautiful building. I'd like to see it preserved, but not if it's gonna cost millions and millions of dollars more than buying a newer facility somewhere else in the city that would work better for our city employees and financially for our taxpayers. That is all. Thank you.
Five B for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application for redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of five million, three-hundred-seventy-six-thousand-five-hundred-eighty-three dollars, accepting and dispersing the grant if the application is successful for the renovation of this Scranton municipal building.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee. Some move. Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'd like to make a motion that city council invite Highland Associates into a caucus next week to discuss this assessment.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'm not sure what time we're gonna schedule this for, but I would just recommend, I don't know, four forty-five or four thirty, just to give us enough time if they're gonna do a PowerPoint presentation, and then if we have questions, so we don't run out of time.
Yeah, I think we could just check with them, find out what they're, what they need as far as a proper presentation, and then work it back in there. But definitely, I agree, we need to, you know, as much time as necessary.
And we're also working on scheduling a meeting with B. Abelzoni on this topic as well, so we'll work on the timing during the week, but I think we all agree that having, having Highland come in to do a presentation will be helpful.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and some move.
Sixth order, six A, reading by title.
Mrs. Reed. That was just the motion on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're still on the question on item five B.
Sorry. Yeah, just on the, the article today, well, first of all, I mean, I was surprised to read it in the paper, not, not surprised by the fact that we had an assessment done, because I knew that, but surprised by the fact that there was discussions that we may sell the building, that that would be a possibility. I wasn't aware of that. I have several questions. I think it's premature to say, you know, what is the best way to do this until we have Highland Associates in and until we have members of the administration in. But I will say this, before anything is done, we should know how we're gonna finance this project. We're asking for nearly six million dollars from the state and then nearly six million dollar match from the city. But as everyone knows, you know, the, the cost of this project will most likely go up, as one speaker mentioned tonight, whether it's looking in the building where there may be mold or other things. So to think that it's gonna stay at ten dollars, I think, is, is not realistic. So my- So, my questions would be, how are we going to finance this? The other thing that I think we should keep in mind is, and it goes back to the recovery plan, if we're going to incur any more debt, which, you know, every city has to, and specifically with this building, I mean, we cannot let it go into disrepair. There are, if you look at the assessment, it's 100 and some pages, there are major problems with this building. However, in the recovery plan, it says that the city should have a debt management policy. And it says, "The purpose of debt policies is to provide written guidelines to all policymakers and elected officials to ensure the city does not issue too much debt or issue debt for the wrong reasons." It says, "A debt management policy should be approved by city council and the mayor. It will serve to provide credibility, transparency, and to ensure that there is a common understanding among elected officials and staff regarding the city's approach to debt financing." Goes on to say that, "With the city's bond indebtedness and annual debt service being reduced to more, a more manageable level, coupled with more sustainable minimum municipal obligations for its pensions, it will be important for the city not to backslide into incurring debt for operating costs, pensions, or workers' compensation, and to keep annual debt service expenditures at a level that is affordable and sustainable. In this regard, the city will need to be disciplined in prioritizing and paying for its capital needs by using some pay-as-you-go funding along with a small amount of debt." So, I would just, you know, like to have a conversation as we move forward with the business administrator, that we have these things in place before we take out or take on any more debt. The other question I would just pose, and that I thought about today, is, is it really realistic to sell this building? Is it realistic to build a new facility? These are the questions that we need to think about. I look, since I started on council, the capital expenditures have increased dramatically, dramatically, and I just hope that we are not stretching ourselves too thin financially. We just, we're spending money at the Sorenne Center that we acquired, we're taking on that additional responsibility, we have issues within our park system that have been discussed, that it's hard for us to maintain that. So, I just think that as part of this conversation, and Councilman Evans alluded to it, is that we need to make sure that we have a building maintenance plan for the future, and we really should have had one all along. As I said, my guess is that, you know, this $10 million figure will rise once, you know, they come in and look at the different issues that are going on in the building. But I just think that we should be cautious, we shouldn't jump into anything, we need to make sure that we know how we're going to finance this and that it's feasible. And, you know, I'm just concerned at this point about what's best for the taxpayers and what is best for their money. But it goes without saying that once you actually sit down and read this report, there are serious issues with this building, and to leave it go to disrepair would not be fair either. So, that's all I have this week, and I look forward to next week, meeting with Highland Associates, and hopefully someone from the administration to discuss these issues in detail. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Sixth order, six A, reading by title, file of the council number 59, 2019, and ordinance amending file of the council number 17, 2018, amending file of the council number four, 2018, entitled, and ordinance amending file of the council number 17, 1994, entitled, and ordinance as amended authorizing the governing body of the city of Scranton to enact a waste disposal and collection fee for the purpose of raising revenue to cover the waste disposal and collection costs incurred by the city of Scranton for the disposal of refuse by imposing a waste disposal and collection fee of $300 for calendar year 2019, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter to extend the May 1, 2019 discount date to May 31, 2019, to enable residents to take advantage of the 10 percent discount when paying their refuse bill in full.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A past reading by title.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Seventh order, seven A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file of the council number 58, 2019, authorizing the installation of two two-hour parking-only restrictions directly in front of 934 Beach Street, Zaleski's Clubhouse Cafe.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I just want to say that Zaleski's is a great business within the city, and I'm hoping that this legislation alleviates the parking issues that have been going on up there. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.